Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting on the Wednesday, October 7th, 2015. Can I have the roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP President.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Riss.
Here.
Tabia Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Could we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion for the approval of the minutes in September 16?
Second.
A motion of second for the approval of the September 16 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? I don't see any, okay. Public speak time. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something other than that's on the public hearing, please come to the podium, state your name.
Mr. John.
John Mason, Parks and Recreation. I handed you guys out some flyers for our events coming up in October. Next Saturday, we have our Harvest Fest. It's our fifth annual. It's the 17th. Rain date will be the 18th. It's noon to 5:00. Free admission. We do a pumpkin carving contest. We have Dan Kane and friends playing, performing in Pavilion 4 from 2:00 to 4:00. We have kids games, inflatables, vendors, crafts, all kinds of, the Roaming Railroad train rides through the park. So, all kinds of fun stuff on that day. We also are in conjunction with the Yappy Valley Dog Show is that day, which starts at 11:00. So, they start a little bit before us and they run to about 3:00 o'clock. So, it's a great day in the park. So, hopefully we have some nice weather for that. And then the 27th, Tuesday, will be the Rag Shag. We leave Maple School and we'll be ending at East Hampton Savings Bank again this year. We used that route last year. It worked out well for volunteers, parade goers, the bank, the police department really loved that route. It was, it worked out really well. So, that's upcoming in October. So, be prepared with the traffic concerns on the 27th.
Good time.
Rag Shag steps off at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public would like to address the council concerning, if you could just state your name and address for the...
Great. Hi, I'm Carrie Foley. I'm a teacher at Whitebrook. I'm from the East Hampton Educators Association. I'm the new VP of the union. I just wanted to give a flyer and tell you about an event we're having in two weeks. It's called Test the Test and it's to build community around some legislation that's happening on the state level around standardized testing. So, it's to help familiarize parents and community members with what the tests are, what they look like, kind of experience taking the test if you want to, talking to others, getting information about what your child does for testing in school. And we're inviting some local legislators and writing letters in support of a bill that's currently with the state. So, we'd love for community members to join us and I brought some flyers. There's an email address you can contact us with any questions, but we'd love to have community involvement and make some connections with each other so that we can learn who each other is and support our students with testing.
What's that date?
That is October 21st, a Wednesday, at East Works from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
That's the meeting room.
In the first floor meeting room?
Yes.
Yeah, it's October 21st, our next meeting at 6:00 o'clock.
Well, you can have your meeting and come take the test after. We will have food and drink, hopefully. So, you can come have a nice water and hopefully some snacks.
If we have a short meeting, certainly like to be there.
Exactly.
You won't grade us, though.
We will not. No, ungraded. You don't even have to score it. It's just to try both tests that's at stake.
Yeah, just don't show it to anybody.
Yeah, don't talk about it.
Yeah, we don't want to be embarrassed.
Exactly. So, we'd love to have you join us. Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Everyone in the public is...
It's all right. I'm sorry, there's one more question. I didn't catch that.
You were inviting members of the public.
We are. We're inviting community, other communities, neighboring towns. I'm a parent in Northampton, so we're just spreading the word for a community building and just for conversation, just to familiarize everybody with what's happening on the state level.
So, everybody who's listening should feel treated as invited.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I mean, you can pass the word, the flyer, you can photocopy, post if you have a local business or know an owner. We would love that.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you for your time. Oh, I'm sorry, one more question. I need to do this to you.
Who are the legislators who are invited?
We are inviting Representative, legislator Sky back and it's been a long day in the classroom, so excuse me if I fumble the names. Hummerson and Rosenberg.
Okay.
We invited all of them and we are requesting if they aren't able to attend that they send in aid. And some of our legislators, Hummerson was a co-signer of the bill that's currently with the State House. And that bill asks for a three-year moratorium on the use of high-stakes tests. So, stop with the high stakes with rating students and schools for three years and investigate, build teams around what are the tests for, what's the purpose, and building up some information on not using them in a harmful way, but using them in a productive way. So, there's about 50 legislators that have co-signed this bill and there's a lot of support for it. So, some of our local legislators have co-sponsored it and it's a chance to thank them and ask for their continued support. So, it should be a great event. Thank you.
So, I won't be remiss. Anyone else?
Yes, I know, I'll say.
I think we're done.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, communications, Councilor Riss. Couple of announcements from our city clerk. The deadline to register to vote for the November 3rd election is Wednesday, October 14th. That's Wednesday, October 14th. That's a week from tonight. The city clerk's office will be open until 8:00 p.m. on the 14th for voter registration. You can call 529-1460 for more information. Also, East Hampton Public Safety is having a blood drive, the police department, in the Police Department Bay, 32 Pace and Avenue, Saturday, October 10th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's this Saturday, correct? Yep. For an appointment, contact Lauren at 527-1212, extension 1084. Please bring a positive ID. It's being run by the American Red Cross and the police and the public safety and the fire department, I imagine. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Communications, Mayor Cag.
Thanks, Dan, for advertising the Blood Cross, the Red Cross Blood Drive, but it's also the open house for the Public Safety Complex that day.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so that's this Saturday and the open house is 12:00 to 6:00. And obviously, the public's welcome. And thanks for talking about the Blood Cross, because I was, I mean, about the Red Cross, I was going to do that, too. Okay, so, I thought the councilors would be interested in, you know, we're always talking about budgets and how expensive and obviously transfers come to you for repairs and miscellaneous items and all different vehicles through the year. But I know we've mentioned it before, how the DPW saves a lot of funds by doing a lot of their in-house things. So, I thought it would be, you know, actually a good idea to know how much. So, they had a couple of the in-house projects they've done over the last year or so. They did a roof at Ballard Street Pump Station. They did a roof at the Adams Street Pump Station. They replaced the pump station on Brook Street and then the Mount Tom Pump Station. And by doing all of this in-house was a savings of approximately $295,000. So, and most of these, they would, you know, had outside quotes for and then what it ended up costing them. So, I think that's pretty impressive and I thought the councilors would like to know that. On another note, there's also a hearing. It's a joint hearing at the State House on Tuesday. You know, I've been working, you know, on different legislative initiatives with our, with our representatives, legislative representatives for, well, well over a year now, and also with our school committee and with our superintendent on, you know, on the issue of charter, you know, charter and choice. But there's a legisla, there's a joint hearing on Tuesday at the State House only pertaining to charter. And the superintendent and myself will be sending, you know, a detailed letter stating, you know, the issues that, how it affects East Hampton. And it'd be pretty detailed and I'd like to give you a copy of that when it's completed. But the more, the, the whole point of this joint hearing, and I'm not sure if they're going to end up voting that day, but we want to provide them with all the information that we can on our community, is to, there is actually a moratorium now on charter schools. So, the governor has proposed lifting the moratorium, which, you know, obviously for our community, it could be even more damaging financially and crippling to our public education as it is now. So, we, and so that's Tuesday. But in the meantime, you know, I want the councilors to know that what we've been doing is putting together all different figures on basically, you know, what it costs the city each time a child either charters, and it can be different per student, but each time a child, a child either charters out or chooses out and then obviously Smith-Vogue, which are very costly expenses to the city. And just a rough draft of what we've done. And, you know, one of the, one of the things I'm working on, a lot of people talk about the formulas and changing of the formulas for Chapter 70. You know, it's uncertain whether when and if that formula is ever changed, if it will benefit our community. Might benefit some, might not benefit others. But what we're looking at and, you know, what I've, I've talked to the Senate Speaker and again, our representative and our senator, is looking at different ways to fund the charter and the choice. Instead of the 70 coming to us to go directly, you know, it's initiative that we've been working on is to go directly to where the child goes to school so that we're not paying out much more than we're getting back in. So, just, just a rough draft of the numbers and we've been preparing for this with the school business agent and our finance, Melissa from finance and also Nancy and myself. And just looking at, just a net cost of charter, it's kind of, it's kind of interesting. If you go back to 2009, it was, it was a cost, and this was just charter, it was a cost of almost $300,000. So, under $300,000 was the cost to the city in, the loss to the city in 200, in 2009. In 2016, it's over $753,000. So, as, as these enrollments increase, you can see how the, the increase to our city budget, which comes as an expense, which comes off our city budget. So, these are things that, you know, we're working on constantly. And, you know, I just noticed that from time to time, things will come up in discussions, but this is something that we've been on for a long time and, and we're going to persist with our legislators and have many meetings, many conversations, as does, you know, the superintendent's association, mayor's associations, all of us. But we're all working together on initiative, hoping that we can get some legislation on the other end to, to help us out on that. So, if anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. And I think that's all I wanted to, you know, update for now.
Actually, a quick question for you, just concerning the charter. Do you know, is there a bill being formulated right now to address maybe direct state funding for these charter schools?
That's what I'm proposing.
Okay, but it hasn't, it doesn't exist at this point?
It does not. And I spoke to the speaker, Speaker Rosenberg, at, at a mayor's meeting a couple of months ago and he had told me that, you know, the suggestion that I was talking about makes perfect sense because Massachusetts is one of the few, if only, state that does it the way we do it. So, and I asked, where do we go from here? So, it would be to get somebody to, it would actually have to be a bill, legislative change. So, that's what we're looking for at this point, to get support, you know, from our local and, and then obviously you need someone at the top, too. So, this mor, releasing the moratorium is obviously of grave concern to us, so...
Is there any additional questions from the mayor? Okay, one more question for you. Councilor Hagan actually brought this up and since I'm not sure when we could talk about it, did we ever hear back from the lawyer considering the, the animal fund, if it was a true, if it was a trust or not? Did we ever have a decision how we have to handle that fund yet, you know?
Well, I think what we have to do is, we actually didn't get, we actually have not received a formal legal opinion from our city attorney, no, to answer that question, no.
So, okay.
And, yeah, and, and we will pursue whatever we need to do on that to, if, if and how to alter it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, any more questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President, I move for you to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
My motion is second, open public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion passes. Councilor Riss.
Good evening, councilors. We have on our agenda an original request by the East Hampton, by Burns Maxi, our arts coordinator and the mayor, to amend Code 10.1 by changing the name of the East Hampton Cultural Council LLC to that of the East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee. On the surface, this seemed a simple request. However, through two subsequent meetings of the Rules and Government Relations Committee, we discovered there were some issues. The original request, change the name, indicates that the committee under 10.1, the East Hampton Cultural Committee LLC, was a standing committee, or I designated as a subcommittee, of the parent committee, which is the ECA Plus Committee. As a result of that, we discussed whether or not we should have more than one committee and who would be the appointing authority. Just to review, the cultural council in East Hampton is responsible to distribute the mass cultural council grants to local artists. They wanted a new name to clarify the responsibility so people knew where to go for grants, the word "grants" is in the name, and to better link it to the ECA Plus Committee. They are required, the East Hampton, whoever's giving the grants, the new committee, required to follow mass cultural committee rules and regulations. Questions arose, especially on how this committee was appointed in the past, and if I'm incorrect, Burns Maxi will clear it up, but it was appointed through the committee, the parent committee, not through the mayor. We discovered that the name change wouldn't be sufficient because Burns Maxi did do some research when all of this came up to try and clarify all of this, that the mass cultural council regulations require that the highest authority in a city or town, that being our mayor, must appoint the members to this committee. As a result, we had to, we decided as the Rules Committee that this should be a separate committee, clearly appointed by the mayor, so that's designated in our new 15-5, which designates the name of the new committee and that the mayor would be the appointing authority. So, we decided that. The new committee would be appointed by her and the responsibilities are dictated by the mass cultural council. You'll see that there's a lot of that in 15-5 in what is required of the committee. The new name, ECA Plus, ECA Plus Grants Committee establishes guidelines that especially relate to the mass cultural council guidelines, establishes membership. And what's interesting is also in 15-4, which amends the original East Hampton City Arts Committee establishment, established that the membership would be five to nine members. However, a quorum shall consist of one half plus one of the members then appointed. Therefore, if we left it alone and a nine-member committee was required to have a quorum of five, but only six members were then appointed, we would have a problem with quorums. And I thought this was an excellent way to establish that the committee could meet and only a quorum. So, if the mayor only at this time appoints seven members, they would only need four to have a quorum for any meeting, which makes these volunteer committees easier to meet and do their work. 15-4 then amends 10-1, eliminating the East Hampton Cultural Committee as a standing committee and establishes the membership and quorum guidelines for that committee. Another thing that came up was the timing for this, but we luckily are okay. The mass cultural council, through a request of clarification from Burns Maxi, indicated that the current members who are applying for this committee can review the applications which are coming in now for these grants because they will be on the new committee. So, they don't have to wait until they're officially appointed. Because even if we vote, which I hope you do, establish this committee tonight, the mayor must technically post the appointments to the committee for 10 days. So, even though she has appointments lined up to go, we have to wait for the 10 days to be up. So, our next council meeting will get the appointments. Assuming the appointments committee appoints the new members, the first meeting in November, they still would be able to meet and at least provide the grants, distribute the grants. Their normal deadline, if I'm correct, is the middle of November. So, the timing is okay. We're okay with it, especially since they can continue to read the applications and be aware of what, what's being brought before them. This is dealing with some funds, so that's why this is pretty tricky. We'd have to do it this way. So, Burns Maxi's here and I'd like her to come up and answer any of your questions or clarify anything I said that might be an error, which I hope I didn't.
Thank you, counselor. The only clarification I have is I, the, I think it was confusing as to how the, the committee members or subcommittee members, or we were unsure of what it was, looking at the current administrative code. So, how they were in the past appointed, I think differed based on the mayor and the way that, however, the mayor decided to appoint them. So, I think it was appointed in the sense of a subcommittee member through the mayor, not the coordinating committee. So, it just didn't follow home charter rule.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and that's why we clarified.
Exactly. And I, I just want to thank the city clerk and the mayor, as well as the councilors, for your help in this process. I think, I think it'll, you know, help us in the future as far as appointing members and for those that are, those that are coming on board.
Actually, Councilor Riss, I think this was your idea, too. I think what was a nice transition because before, obviously, it was quite obvious the relationship between those two, the Grants Committee and the ECA Plus because they were a subcommittee. And so, there was a concern, two separate committees, what will the, like, I think it was your suggestion, that part of the description of the new Grants Committee will at least be one member from the ECA Plus.
Right, I forgot to mention.
Yes.
So, I think that's a nice transition.
Yes, that's very important.
Okay.
And I, and I wish I could take credit for the, the quorum language that was included, but I, I think that was actually part of the original ECA Plus Coordinating Committee Administrative Code, which is excellent.
I think it's a great idea for all our committees because we've had, recently, the EDIC had problem meeting. So, if you have only six of 10 members appointed, then they could still meet.
Exactly.
If they put it in their quote. So, that's excellent. Anybody else have questions?
Questions for...
No, I, I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank you because now that this is going to be a mayoral-appointed board, that we are going to do the minutes from these meetings online so that the public can see them and, you know, to continue with the transparency of the boards and committees.
Absolutely, and they have, they have been online. They have been submitted, they've been following the same procedures that every committee does.
Yep.
So, they have been submitted to the city clerk. I think there was some question of, if they actually got online.
Yeah.
But, and I said that we could put them on our...
I really appreciate you addressing that.
On our, on our own website, yes.
I had a question because I don't remember what we talked about. As I understand it, the ECA Plus committee members can still apply to be on this, I mean, it could be more than one. There's no, there's no regulation that prevents ECA Plus committee members from joining also the Grants Committee. They could be on two committees.
We encourage them to apply to as many committees and subcommittees as possible.
Yeah, that way, there's linkage between the two.
Absolutely.
I like that.
Absolutely.
Good. Councilor Hagan?
Burns, I don't know if this is your, Dan, I just noticed one provision here and it looks like it's something you have to do is, members...
Which quote? Five?
Five.
Okay.
Members can only be appointed for three years and then two terms. So, it'll be six years and then they have to stay off a year. I know you're a very active bunch. You think it's going to be a problem, you know, I know this is down in the, in the future, but six years from now of, if the whole board is appointed at the same time, like replenishing the board or...
Sure, that, that's an MCC guideline, a Massachusetts Cultural Council guideline. And so, we, we make sure that we try to, try to have members come in staggered so that that doesn't happen. So, we have the new members that will be coming in all at once, so that, that could potentially be a problem. But I think that if, I, I believe there's only six members currently, so that'll add an additional three more possibly coming in. It's a very active committee. I'll say, I'll say historically, one of the reasons, if you don't know what the plus sign is for ECA Plus, was the merger of the coordinating committee and this MCC/LCC Grants Committee. And so, that was very important. And people come to us from throughout the state and the region and say, how do you make this work? And this is what I point to. And it's, it's such an instrumental thing because you have all of these different organizations and groups and like-minded event makers and fund, fund givers who are, who are sharing the information under the same umbrella. So, it's very helpful. So, if you are giving funds out for an event, you can say, hey, you know what, there's all of these different resources out there that can help you out. So, it's, it makes us stronger.
Excellent, thank you.
Any additional questions? Before we go, I just want to, again, I, whenever I get an opportunity, thank you so much for your outstanding leadership. You have done such an amazing job and with art walks and everything that benefit besides the culture, but financial, but, you know, thank you again. You've done an outstanding job.
Thank you. And I'll say that we have over 50 volunteers who are working on subcommittees year-round. So, it's, it's not just me.
Well, pass that on. Yeah, exactly. Pass that on to thank them all from the council.
But you coordinate them.
I coordinate them. I do the best I can.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mayor Cag, if you'd like to say something?
And I'd like to just take a second to thank the subcommittee for working on this. And this is, you know, by straightening this out and, you know, the administrative code that I've put forward, this has been, this grant, you know, Barbara's nodding, the grant subcommittee, this will straighten it out. And this has been for Barbara and I, over the last few years, a very confusing appointed issue. So, I feel that this is resolved and it'll be so much easier to follow. And also, the concern, you had Counselor Hagan about everybody getting on and off and Burns was mentioning staggered. Because the guidelines are different on this particular grant committee, they will have different expiration dates. They won't be the end of December like all our other boards and committees. And also, they're coming on, they'll come on with the terms they have. So, they won't be starting fresh with the, with individual three-year terms. They'll be coming on with the, the ones that have requested to be put on, with the terms they have. And they will expire with the expiration dates they currently have. And the renewal process, you know, comes out of my office and this is a time of year where we send letters to anybody on a board or committee that wants to be reappointed or might not want to be reappointed. We hope that they do. And Barbara provides us with the lists. So, this is something that we will watch and it'll stand out a little easier because they'll be the only ones, other than the licensing board, that don't have the December 31st expiration dates. So, it'll be a little easier to keep track of in a lot of ways. So, and I just wanted to thank you for getting this cleared up.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Okay. Anyone else from, thanks. Anyone else in the public who would like to come to the podium to address the council? Okay, Councilor Riss?
All right, I have to do this in two motions because there are two codes, 15-4 and 15-5. The first motion, I move that in accordance with the, with administrative code 15-4 and pursuant to the East Hampton Home Rule Charter, Section 6.1B, the city of East Hampton hereby amends and replaces administrative code 10-1, which establishes the role and responsibilities of a municipal body known as the East Hampton City Arts Plus.
Is there a second here?
Second.
Okay, a motion of second for the, just, the motion relating to changing 15-4. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion passes.
Secondly, I move that in accordance with administrative code 15-5 and pursuant to the East Hampton Home Rule Charter, Section 6.1B, the city of East Hampton hereby establishes the role and responsibilities of the East Hampton City Arts Plus Grants Committee.
Second. Okay, a motion of second for the change for administration code 15-5. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion passes.
Mr. President, I move the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Motion of second, close public hearings, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Notwithstanding the committee's Rules and Government Relations, Counselor Riss.
Uh, Mr. President, thank you, I have no additional report.
Okay, Finance Counselor Hagan?
Uh, we will have a meeting next week, uh, October 14th at 6:00 PM in Room 1. Currently on our agenda, and we'll keep it there, as President McCoy said earlier, the kennel donation account, they're still working on that. And then there is several items of new business that I can either take care of now or.
You can move them now.
Okay, I'll, I'll start. There's four supplemental appropriations and I'll do a first reading. The first supplemental appropriation is dated October 1st, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $30,000. It's appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings and appropriated to the water capital in the amount of $30,000. The amounts requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the replacement of a three-quarter ton pickup truck. The second, and I'll move them all to committee at the end. The second supplemental appropriation is also dated October 1st, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $46,200 to be appropriated from free cash in the amount of $34,188 in enterprise retained earnings, in the amount of $12,012, to be appropriated to the motor repair capital fund for $46,200. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for replacement of a three-quarter ton pickup with a four-by-four one-ton pickup. The third supplemental appropriation is also dated October 1st, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $47,000 to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings and that amount, $47,000, is appropriated to water enterprise capital, $47,000. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for replacement of a three-quarter ton pickup truck. And the final supplemental appropriation, first reading, is also dated October 1st, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $68,000 to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings and appropriated to the water enterprise capital project and that amount, $68,000. The amounts requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the design of the replacement of a 12-inch cast iron water main under the Ferry Street Bridge. And I would make a request that all four of those supplemental appropriations be moved to the Finance Committee.
Second. A motion of second to move those four supplemental appropriations to Finance.
Second.
Sorry? Okay, any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And we also have had a request from the Board of Assessors that we start moving toward having a public hearing involving the classification, tax classification for fiscal year 2016. So I would ask that that also be moved to Finance for consideration.
Second. Okay, motion of second to move the classification hearing discussion also to Finance. Additional discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And I believe that concludes Finance.
Okay, Public Safety Counselor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are continuing to review the student acceptance protocol and we have a meeting set for October 15th at 5:45 PM. Room to be determined to go over the two utility requests on Brook Street.
I have a question, I believe, are you, did you ever get a response back from planning related to?
They haven't had their meeting yet and I had an email exchange with Jessica today to just let them know what we are looking for.
Okay.
For clarification.
Thank you. And that concludes.
We haven't even met about it yet. Do you think we should schedule a public meeting now?
There's no time, is there a time on this, Barb, do you know, time sensitive?
I don't.
Okay, so we'll assume there isn't then, at a normal pace. Appointments, Counsel Winnie?
Thank you. And we reviewed one appointment tonight at our meeting for Kevin Mathers for the Manhan Rail Trail Committee, um, with the term of expiration of December 31st, 2018. Uh, we had one person at our meeting, our city clerk, Barbara LaBumbard, who spoke favorably of the appointment as she has met Mr. Mathers and he has attended one of their meetings. The committee voted 3 to 0 to come to the full city council to appoint this person to the Manhan Rail Trail Committee. Does anybody have any questions? If there are not being any, I make the motion that we appoint Kevin Mathers to the Manhan Rail Trail Committee with his expiration term of December 31st, 2018.
Second.
Okay, second on that. And again, this also came up during the meeting, just for any people out there who are interested. Barb mentioned that they're always looking, like most committees, unfortunately, looking for new members. So if there are bicyclists, bicyclists or people who use the trail a lot, please consider volunteering for this committee because, uh, it'd be good to have new members and again, Kevin is one of them, but. Uh, so we have a motion of second, all those on favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And is it my report for tonight, Mr. President? Thank you.
All right, Ordinance Counselor Durbin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so the Ordinance Subcommittee is continuing our, um, joint public hearings with the Planning Board to discuss the zoning, um, updating of the map. Uh, and so we are going to continue our joint hearing on the 13th, October 13th, at 6:00 PM. I believe that we're downstairs this time. So that should be of note, but we will be 6:00 PM on October 13th to discuss that. I believe there's only one or two outstanding issues that need to be dealt with. Now, the Ordinance Subcommittee will be meeting the next night, which is the 14th, uh, at 6:00 PM. And at that time, we're going to be reviewing, um, the over quota licenses, which, as you can see, needs a little bit of a extension. So I'm going to move that we ask for a 30-day extension on that particular item.
Second. A motion of second for a 30-day extension on this, uh, over quota liquor license. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And I would be amiss if I didn't, um, since we're meeting, continuing our joint hearing with the Planning Board to also request the 30-day extension on the updating of the zoning map in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second for a similar 30-day extension on the update of the zoning map. Additional comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Uh, and then finally, I would like to set a public hearing, um, for the 21st at 6:15 PM to review, uh, the over quota liquor licenses, which, um, so I'll, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Before we vote on it, I, I don't think we necessarily, uh, I don't think we have to advertise that public hearing. I just wanted to give people an opportunity to, um, be able to weigh in on that. So that's why we're putting it on the public hearing agenda.
But you'll have a, you'll have a tentative.
We will have a ten, we will, yes, we will, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, what's the date on that?
21st.
21st.
Next meeting.
Okay, so we have a, is there, is a motion then, is there a second for that public hearing?
A second.
Okay, motion of second, public hearing on 21st for the over quota liquor license discussion. Any additional comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
That concludes.
Okay, thank you.
Do property too.
I guess, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Okay, well done, thank you very much.
Really.
We're still busy, we are still accumulating names for the petition. Still looking to fill that committee, so that will be continued. New business, we do have to approve the warrant for the elections coming up.
Mr. President, I move that the warrant for the November 3rd city election be approved by the city council.
Second.
Motion of second approval, again, this is for, the election will be November 3rd. It's for the mayor, city councils at large, district councilors and school committee. And again, the voting precincts remain the same, 1, 2, and 5 will be at Whitebrook and 3 and 4 will be at East Hampton High School. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. I believe we've accomplished all our work tonight, so if, uh, if you'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.